You're down, aren't you, member?
Yeah, he doesn't. They sit down.
I'm supposed to go to all of this room for their council meeting, every single one of them.
I have a call this meeting to order eight to six thirty-two. On January the eighth, twenty twenty-four, at the Rosewood Center. Welcome, everybody. It's good to see everybody here tonight. Appreciate everybody coming out on this cold night. So tonight I'm going to ask you, council member Lawrence, will you please be our location?
We thank you for giving us opportunity tonight to better serve our community and to carry a little bit forward. We thank you for your many blessings. Please watch over us, especially tomorrow with the storm to come to our community. Please, we pray that everyone stays safe. In your name, we pray, amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're going to take roll call of council member Schuman. Council member Hackett. Council member Ray Neal.
Here.
Council member Massey.
Here.
Here. Council member. Sorry, mayor announcements. Happy to be here, everybody. Hope everybody can start it off with Ray of twenty twenty-four. And December first, we pre-elected our council members. So appreciate them being willing to run again and serve their community. We have council members. Nancy, yes, council member and council member Whitaker. So thank you all for being willing to serve again and appreciate your service and how you've been helping so far and looking forward to another four years of going on. We did also, the same night we had our tree lighting, and I just want to give a shout out to Liberty Elementary School for us. They did a great job coming out and singing for us at night. It was wet, and so I appreciate all those that did come out and break the cold and rain, but we had a good time and we had Blue Paper Baptist that came out and provided the hot chocolate for us and we had cookies. And then we had the Interact Club that came and we appreciate council member Lawrence always heading that up for us, getting them involved and just being a part of the community. We're hoping everybody coming together to be able to put on a great Christmas tree lighting. So thank you, everybody. And then unfortunately, we did have to cancel the Christmas parade this year, this past year. It was a hard decision, but one that we felt was necessary with the weather and just making sure that everybody was safe. And but we do appreciate the rec department in that when they had their Christmas tree event, that they also included those that wanted to come out and showcase their folks that weren't able to be in the parade. So we had a great time for Christmas again. It's all about actually coming together and pitching in as a community and working together. So thank you all. That is it for my announcements. So next is, I think this next is for our citizens that wish to address city council.
We have Jody Whittaker.
Well, that way we can make sure that gets you using your hat and it's toward them.
Oh, my name's Jerry Whitaker. I was born and raised in this town, over fifty-three years, business in this town. My dad started business in nineteen seventy-six towards Gaffey. Me and my sister called, my mom, after my dad passed away, we run at the Yanks Way for eight years. I appreciate each and every one of y'all for what y'all do. I know y'all pitch a lot of life, you know, I get to hear about this on social media, the chickens, the mirror, all of this stuff. Having said that, I live on Whitaker Street and I started cleaning my condo. I don't know if any of y'all have ridden by, cleaned it up, spent lots of money, trying to make it look good, trying to make it look good for the town. To come to find out that you guys have voted in to let mobile homes go back in the city. I found that out on this trip with Doc, if somebody can let me know that. From what I've got on social media, similar, the mayor had signed it in, if I'm not mistaken, somewhere around March of this year, for mobile homes to come back into the mobile home courts. I don't have anything against mobile homes, I really don't, I lived in one myself, but we've had this ordinance in this town, I couldn't tell you, I know since the eighties, it may have been before that, that once you took a mobile home out of this town, you cannot bring another one back in. So I've come to find out, there was Spanish guy the other day wanting to argue about where the property line is, over there on Westy, across, directly across from Dunkass, to find out that he's bringing seven mobile homes in here, that's twenty years old. And I just don't understand where in the world that we think, or y'all think, that bringing mobile homes back in here is going to be a good revenue for the city. That's not the issue, that we have an issue, and I know the reason you make that, like I said, I own a business here, I can say probably, I don't know if any of y'all own a business or do, has anybody? Ron, Ron DeHaas, it's, it's hard. Bringing businesses in is what we need to do, not bringing mobile home courts, to devalue the property, my property. I mean, it's not fair. And mayor, if I'm not mistaken, after looking it up, do you live at three eleven Mills Avenue, is that true, Stacey? That was a trucker that tried to come in at three or four Mills Avenue about a year ago in that building, is that true, Stacey? Was you on the council or was you there when that happened? Why did that trucker not get stuck?
I really don't want to go over to it.
Okay, I understand.
This is between, but.
That's right, I understand, but I feel the same way. There's a place for mobile homes, it's not inside the city. It can be outside.
Okay, I appreciate you letting me know your time is up, but I appreciate you bringing this to our attention. I'll definitely talk with Philip and we'll get back with you. If I can, you got his number, and so we will definitely talk and we'll reach out and talk with you about the whole thing in your eyes and your hands. So I appreciate it, everybody, thank you.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, any others, yes? All right, so we've asked you our three minutes. We've got our November thirteenth, twenty twenty-three regular session.
I'll make a motion.
All right.
Second.
Got a motion, council member Ray Neal, and a second by council member Massey, do you have any discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving our minutes for November thirteenth, twenty twenty-three regular session, please signify. All right, November twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three special call session, do you have a motion?
I can't hear, I'm not able to hear.
I'm sorry, I'll make a motion. Okay, I have a motion by council member Whitaker, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by council member Schuman, lady, any discussion on that? Right treatment, all those in favor? Approving November twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three special call session, minutes, please signify. And November twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three special call session, minutes, do I have a motion? I have a motion by council, council member Schuman, lady, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by council member Lawrence, any discussion? All right, all of you, you signify.
All right.
All right, ten, for our December first, twenty twenty-three minutes for special call session, do I have a motion to approve this?
I'll make a motion.
Council member Ray Neal, who has a second? Second. Second by council member Baywood, any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please signify.
Aye.
Moving on, we have no unfinished business, new business, we do have resolution number twenty twenty-four, that's zero one. This is a resolution appointing commissioner to the commission of the Pickett Regional Joint Water System and other matters related there too. So we do have Michael Calvert, our administrator, was on that commission and so we need to replace him. So we are going to be appointing Philip Trotter, our interim administrator to that. So do I have any motion to appoint Philip Trotter to the Pickett Regional Joint Water System? I'll make a motion. I have a motion by council member Whitaker, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by council member Ray Neal, any discussion on that? All right, here in none, all those in favor of appointing our interim administrator, Philip Trotter, to the Pickett Regional Joint Water System, please signify. Aye. And. That was ten years ago. I think he meant it. Abstain. So we've got council member Massey that abstains on that. And then passes. Thank you. All right, then we are moving on. Our nomination, we need the nomination for our mayor pro temp. So state law requires that every two years we do appoint a mayor pro temp. And the mayor pro temp basically takes charge when the mayor is out and just fills that vacancy and helps to run meetings, sign things that need to be signed up. And so it has been two years and council member Ray Neal, he's done a good job. I think he had to do a couple things during that tenure and so we appreciate you, I appreciate you being willing to do that. So we need to get a nomination for mayor pro temp. So do I have any, actually, I guess I need a motion first to do this, and then do I have a nomination?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, so I have a motion by council member Ray Neal.
Second.
All right, and so do I have a nomination?
I would like a nomination, council member Schuman.
Okay, so council member Ray Neal nominates council member Schuman, lady. Do you have any other nominations or any discussion on that? Okay, all right, and all those in favor of appointing council member Schuman, lady, as our mayor pro temp, please signify. Aye. All right. All right, thank you. Congratulations, thank you. All right, and next, order of business is our interim city administrator contract. Any discussion on that and all that in front of you, you have a chance to look over that. So I do need a, I need a motion to vote to approve the interim city administrator contract.
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion by council member Massey, do I have a second?
Second.
And a second by council member Schuman, lady, do you have any discussion on that? I know we had discussion the other night, so. All right, we're here in none, then all those in favor of approving our interim city administrator contract, please signify.
Aye.
All right, thank you, and that's the minutes. And that will be posted to the website this week or next week for the public to see that. All right, then moving along, now it's time for our interim city administrator report.
Thank you, mayor. I'll come up here since I don't have a mic, how does that sound? First off, let me pass out updated community development reports so that everybody has those. If you have any questions on any of those, I'll be glad to address those. November was a big month, so if you want to take a look at that specifically, we have sixty residential home permits during November. So that was the most activity in those, in those. Updates from city hall, activities, things such as that, what's going on inside of the city of Liberty, bill to look out, business license renewals will go out on the week of January twenty-second. City staffs working hard to get those renewals out, they will be due back by April thirtieth. So they will be sending out a letter with instructions, contact information for anybody that has questions when those renewals come out. Liberty rec department, winter sports, basketball is in full swing. We actually had twelve total teams this time, two six U with their coeds, five eight U, three ten U, and two twelve U teams. So that's a great turnout from basketball. Games actually started January the second, and they've already had two tournaments in basketball this year. Upcoming event, be looking for information coming out, social media, other media there. The January twenty-fourth, we'll be having a community job fair. The rec department is cosponsoring that with work links. It'll actually be held here at the Rosewood Center. And as of this afternoon, when Josh gave me an update on that, we have, I think, nine to ten businesses that were signed up for that activity. So that would be a great community outreach there with the job fair. Comprehensive plan, we've got five elements left on the comp plan to be working through. Jennifer Visser said that she would be presenting that to planning commission on January twenty-third. Once planning commission makes a recommendation, that is a document that will come to full council, it will have to be approved by ordinance, two readings, and a public hearing on your comp plan for that to become enacted. Updating the finance department, so this week we have been working through a RFP for twenty twenty-three. That file came to my desk this afternoon, it will be going out, it actually went out today to three different auditing firms. Proposals will be due back January twenty-sixth, and goal is to bring the nomination or recommendations back to council in February for you guys to look at. Any questions so far on activities in city hall? Okay, so as I started full-time this month, one of the things that I hope to accomplish is to get you guys an update on where we are from a grant standpoint. We have two main active grants right now that I would consider from utility base, they are the rural infrastructure grant, which is your Old Norris Cory Road grant. We're going to dive into that a little tonight, talk about some specifics of that, what it costs, what the city's obligations are, and what it is, what those numbers are actually doing for the city residents and how we're moving forward in progress stats. Next month, hopefully, we'll be able to dive into the skip grant, which is a water line replacement, and then we'll kind of take the others as we move forward in the year. Part one of the Old Norris and Cory Road, it was a RIA grant. It actually started, the original bid was back in September of twenty twenty. It was a single RIA, which is Rural Infrastructure Authority application. It was actually written by the Roger Group, who is the city engineer. And the RIA portion of that grant was right at two hundred and sixty thousand, a city match or city responsibility of non-construction documents and numbers was right at one forty-nine. That was actually put out to bid, and bids came back right at around six hundred thousand. So at that point, I think the brakes were put on this project. Kind of moves us to current of March twenty twenty-two, we resubmitted our application to RIA. And we also added this SRF, which is your state revolving fund. There's two parts to the SRF. There's a, it's a principal forgiveness program for utility construction as well as a low interest loan. We'll talk a little more in detail about what, what section the, this project falls under. RIA committed to fund four hundred and ten thousand on this project. SRF funds was approximately three hundred and nine thousand. That gave a total award amount of seven hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. Winning bid for this project was six hundred and fifty-nine thousand, so bids actually came in under what was awarded for a construction phase of this project. Non-construction numbers, we had engineering of approximately seventy thousand, we had admin fees of approximately forty thousand, which are paid to Appalachian council governments, and then we had a mapping component of approximately thirty-eight hundred dollars. We have paid to date thirty-one thousand in admin invoices. That gave a grand total of right at a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, which is the city of Liberty's match for this, for this grant. One nice thing about talking with RIA and SRF in combination, we will exalt or disperse all of the RIA funds before the SRF funds are utilized. The good point on the SRF part of this is, it is a principal forgiveness. So basically, it will operate just like a grant, there will be no loan or repayment aspects, the city of Liberty has to. Part two, what, what are we going to do with this, with this grant? So part A, Cory Road, everybody's probably seen the construction on the, when we're going out of Liberty on the right-hand side. There's an existing lift station on Cory Road that is sitting on it. It is on the north part of Cory Road. That, we're going to be doing away with that lift station, and we'll be gravity feeding the houses that that lift station served, which was only about seven to eight, into Pickett County's lift station, which is kind of the southernmost part of the, to our, the southern direction from Cory Road. So we will be eliminating a lift station that's owned and maintained by the city of Liberty, which is a positive thing. Where are we at for this project? All the pipe for the gravity fed line is in place, except about a hundred linear feet, which is the crossing of Cory Road and the tie-in at the existing lift station that you guys. All the manholes are in place. The unfortunate, I guess, part of this is, to date, which does not include the excavation under Cory Road, or the distance between Cory Road and the existing lift station is, we have taken out about seven hundred and thirty-four cubic yards of rock. We had put in the budget, or the engineers had estimated somewhere around five hundred cubic yards of rock, so we've got what, two, about two hundred and thirty-four cubic difference there. When you multiply that out, you're looking at about fifty-eight thousand dollars overages in rock to date on this project. And we do expect some overages across Cory Road and getting to the actual lift station. We are going to submit a change order to RIA and SRF. Hopefully, they'll be able to help us out with some of those overages caused. Any questions kind of about part A or Cory Road?
How much of what we're in is going to save the city by eliminating that lift station?
I don't have a dollar amount, but I can tell you, your guys in public works are going to be very thankful that they are no longer having to maintain a lift station here. You'll save power to that lift station, you'll save maintenance of electrical pumps, infrastructure costs of just keeping that lift station in, in operation. I believe you guys have four tools now, including the, that lift station. So when that comes offline, you'll have Odell Lift Station, Rice's Creek, and Old Norris. And Odell and Rice's Creek have both been renovated from what I have been told recently. Part B of this is the Old Norris renovation, so that means all three lift stations owned by the city of Liberty will be completely updated once this, updated once this project is completed. So that's a huge undertaking and a great asset to public quarters in the city of Liberty. Any other questions, have a part A? So part B of this grant is Old Norris Lift Station, it's a complete rehab of the lift station, new electrical, new pumps, there's no line work involved in this aspect of it. We'll be able to keep the lift station operational, we'll bring in local pumps to keep the flow pumped out, we will not have to do any rerouting. Materials are actually set to be delivered this week, hopefully, timeframe is somewhere around four to six weeks on completion of that part of the project as well. Any specific questions on Old Norris? We will have to close Cory Road, going back to that as part A. We are going to put out a media flyer showing where those road closures are going to be, they're ordering signs, they have it working with Chief Hill Strapper to coordinate that. That's all I have, thank you.
All right, thank you. It's exciting to hear the things that are being accomplished. And lots of work comes to thank you so much. All right, we are now in our city council remarks, starting with council member Schuman.
The only thing I would say is, I had an opportunity to talk to Coach Blackberg, just ran into him, actually, I came out of city hall a few weeks ago and spent probably thirty minutes talking to him about his vision for the red car. And we were seeing a lot going on with basketball during our league, and I think a huge round of applause for Jim, I saw this coming over here. And I was just very impressed with what he's wanting to do with our red car, moving much beyond just traditional games in the gym and on field and wanting to really expand that to additional activities. He sends a real strong passion for it. So I hope that as we see this, that the community will jump in and incorporate themselves into it, because there's going to be a lot of enthusiasm for the adults from what he's talking about, jumping to really do that. And he's got, I think he said, three tournaments for basketball in the next couple months. Jumped in, did that, uh, and he's got, I think he said, three tournaments for basketball in the next couple months. And I hope that, that one of the things that he mentioned is that, you know, there is, it's difficult to feed all of those people with the restaurants that we currently have, especially if they're in the afternoon and evening when some of our other restaurants are closed. So I would highly encourage any of the restaurants that are in town. Uh, if you usually close a lunch, talk to them and see if there's a way to work it out, the state open on the bit lane, I think it will benefit you, get people in the door. Uh, and it will help us, because when we have teams coming in from other communities and there's nowhere for them to eat and figure for kids, uh, that discourages them from walking out. So that was one of the things we talked about again, and it's a possible opportunity that there for what we can do to hopefully do some local business, and maybe even bring in some initial state to help support that a little bit. Um, he's working really hard, so I was very, very impressed and, and continue to be with, with what's going on with that.
You did a great job there, so. Councilmember Nancy?
I have nothing to report.
Councilmember Whitaker?
Just, uh, speak my word, um, Henry, what he said, it's just very impressive to me what he's done with the red department in such a short time. And it's good to see all the cars in the parking lot and everybody is involved in it, and I think it's, it's a great start for me, I'm in for as far as I should be.
Thank you. Councilmember Arms?
I had a really good meeting with, uh, several building owners a couple of weeks ago, um, was able to hear some of their concerns and, um, some ideas that they have to, to move our downtown forward. Um, so I did want to thank them for sitting down with me and, and letting me hear their thoughts. Um, I did want to thank Henry and the administrative charter as well, um, I took a lot of those ideas to him, and I think we have a lot of good ideas, some solutions, and some problems that we, um, we have for the near future. So thank you for, for sitting down and, and working hard on that, um, move forward. I do look forward to trying to help get some, some more public input as far as the upper hits of plan goes. Um, this is the first plan we've had since I was in third grade, um, so I do think it is important that we, sorry, I think you know. But I do think it is important that, um, we do have a plan in place that can carry us forward. I was able to read some of the last plan from two thousand and three, um, and so just to see how they use data to move forward and the projections, it, it is time that we, we definitely do this. Um, so I do look forward to trying to get more public input for that and, and trying to help there where I can. Uh, Mayor, you did steal my shout-out this month, um, it was to the Liberty Elementary School course. If you were not at the tree lighting, you definitely missed Noah's heart. Because it did not rain almost all of October and November in that night, made up for best. Um, but despite it, the kids were happy, they were, they were very cheerful, they were their teacher, um, they, they just rolled with the punches and they still gave a great performance, so I did want to thank them for, for helping us at that end. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, very good, so that ends that part, we're going to go enter into executive session now, so I do need a motion for that, please.
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion by Councilmember Grayville, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, right, Councilmember Arms, do you have any discussion? All right, and just for the public to understand, this is the executive session pursuant to South Carolina Code, section thirty dash four dash seventy-eight-five. This is a discussion of match concerning the proposed location expansion on provision of services in energy location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the areas served by the public body. All right. So there's no other discussion?
Did she have the phone?
Um, all those in favor of, um, entering the executive session, please signify.
Aye.
All right. So that is unanimous, and I will ask the public to please step out as we go into the executive session, and you can all wait down in, in the auditorium.
Question? Second.
I have a question for breakover, second, I have a, all are proceeding discussion. All right, here are none, all those in favor of exiting executive session, please signify.
Seven fifty, fifty-nine.
That is unanimous, and we are now out of the second session. All right, um, I need a motion to authorize our interim city administrator to obtain professional planning services in the amount not to exceed ten thousand. Do I have any motion? I have a motion by Councilmember Schuylkill, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilmember Grayville, any discussion? All right, we're done, all those in favor of authorizing our interim city administrator to obtain professional planning services in the amount not to exceed ten thousand, please signify.
Aye.
And it passes unanimous. All right. So that finishes the basis. We have nothing else, so now I need a motion to adjourn.
Oh, so I buy it, I'm gonna give it one.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Baker, second. All right, and Councilmember Grayville, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify.
Aye.
All right.
What time did they enter in executive session, did you write that in? It's okay.